All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our regular meeting of the Town Council, the April 7th, 2025 meeting, to order. If everyone could please stand, I'm going to ask Councilwoman Maranti to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Getting to the agenda, we have no presentations this evening. We can move right to item two, public hearing. I think what I'll do first is have the town clerk read the call to the public hearings this evening.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold public hearings at 7:00 PM on Monday, April 7th, in the council chambers in Plainville to hear public comments regarding, one, proposed amendment to ordinance Chapter 355, taxation, Article 12, collection of revenue, 355-62, billing of supplemental motor vehicle tax; two, Town Council's fiscal year 2026 proposed budget dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this third day of April, 2025.
Okay. Thank you very much. What we're going to do, we'll handle each of these individually. We'll take, what's listed first tonight is the proposed amendment to the ordinance regarding taxation. I don't know if I could kick it to you first, or if we should get a couple comments.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I think it would be appropriate to have our assessor, Sarah Carey, come forward just to give a recap and review of what's being proposed here, and then we can go into the public for their comments and questions.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening. So, we have spoken about it a little bit, but I just want to give a quick summary on what this ordinance change means. This is in regards to our supplemental motor vehicle billing. Supplemental motor vehicles are any vehicle that is not registered on October 1st, but becomes registered within that grand list year. So, it's that first billing, that's a partial billing for the number of months that they own the vehicle. This past legislation cycle, they had changed how we receive our motor vehicle information from DMV. We used to receive it on an annual basis. Now, we receive those files on a monthly basis. The purpose of the legislation was really to try to get supplemental motor vehicle bills out sooner to the public. So, this new ordinance would allow us to bill any vehicles registered October 2nd through the end of March in July, and then the end of the grand list year in January, like we typically do.
All right. Before I open up for, any questions for the town assessor? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
What we'll do then, I'll open it up for a public comment. Is there, if there's anyone that wishes to speak to this particular public hearing, please step forward to the podium, give your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to make your comments. Anyone wish to address this proposed amendment to the ordinance? All right. What we'll do now is move on to our second public hearing, the Town Council's fiscal year 2026 proposed budget. There are handouts on the front table here if anyone wishes to see some of the details. Is there anything before I open this up for comment? Is there anything you want to add before we do that?
Yeah, I think I could, Mr. Chairman, just, you know, read from the document, the handout I have in terms of a quick summary, just for, you know, for cable and anyone watching. But the council proposes a budget of $28,511,798 for the general government and $47,779,178 for the Board of Education. The total budget, or the budget total, $76,290,976. This is an increase of $4,341,48, or a 5.98% increase. If adopted and presented, the mill rate is estimated to be 32.46 for motor vehicles and 34.19 for real estate and personal property. And this is a pretty good summary. Obviously, there's two, actually, total four pages of information here that summarizes our budget, but that's the nuts and bolts of it.
All right. Thank you. What we'll do at this point then is open it up for public comment. Again, please step forward to the podium, give your name and address. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. You're certainly welcome to ask questions. We'll do our best to answer them. If we can't answer them tonight, we'll certainly get the information you've asked for and get back to you. So, with that, is there anyone that wishes to address the proposed budget this evening? Yes?
My name is Quentin Johansson, and I live at 371 Woodford Avenue here in Plainville. I just want to say that I support this budget. I think the council is, and the school board are doing things, and that's what the budgets are supposed to do. They're supposed to move things forward. They're supposed to help people, and, which is why, in a lot of cases, I consider budgets to be moral statements, and I consider a budget that is out there to do the needed work in the town is making a moral statement to the good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council regarding the public hearing on the budget? Yes, Mrs. Pigwesi.
Good evening, Town Councilors and Town Staff.
Good evening.
I have some questions, and I'm sure you can answer them for me regarding the requested increase for next fiscal year. What metrics did you use when you decided what percentage of an increase is going to be passed on to this budget by the time you got to the end? Did you look at any economic indicators? What did you take into consideration when you put this together? What were some of the things that you thought were important to keep your eye on?
Well, I mean, I can only speak for myself.
You're fine. You're ahead.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think one of the things we looked at is economic indicators. As you, you know, we understand inflation. We understood, I think, some of those numbers were considered when we were adopting the budget. One of the other things that I think is very important is, from my perspective at least, is there some things I think we can do within this budget that ultimately will save the town some money? So, I think there was some forward thinking in that respect. You know, we are proposing of hiring a couple more police officers with the hope over the next 18 months to two years that we will see some savings in our overtime. You're shaking your head. No?
Continue. I can comment on that afterwards.
But yeah, so, I, and I, you know, I can't speak for the administration, but I'm sure there were some considerations made as far as, you know, where we are as an economy and where things are going, although granted, with some of the things that have happened the last 10 days, you know, that could, you know, it's a little different than when we were meeting back in March, but.
Right. Well, the reason I ask is that, you know, the requested increase is substantially higher than most economic indicators for the next year. For example, Morgan Stanley is looking at a 2.25% increase for 2025. Excuse me. Goldman Sachs is looking at 3%. Trading economics is between 2.4% and 2.9%. And social security received a COLA increase of 2.5% increase. You know, that's impactful to a great many people, of course. So, why I'm asking this question is the total government increase was 6.75%, and the Board of Education increase request was 5.53%, substantially higher than what the folks out in the financial world, can I have somewhere a little bit more time?
Yeah, that actually, and I'll even give you a little bit more.
I know. That's 30 seconds.
That means you had 30 seconds left, but I'll, you can.
Doesn't look like there's a lot of people here tonight, so I won't take advantage. I just appreciate your willingness to let me do this. So, again, those increases are substantially higher than the economic indicators of this upcoming year. Now, these indicators were created certainly before last week, right, and all things that happened at the federal level, but we're talking about the local level. We're talking about what's happening in Plainville and how this is going to affect our tax rate, not just for next year, but building on it in years afterwards. And so, the concern I have is this budget has had, the Board of Education's past two budgets combined are 11% increases. The Town Council's requested budget for those same two consecutive years are at 10%. Now, I don't think we can sustain this for very long. I know that you use fund balance to use as a revenue source to offset some of your spending, and I know, Mr. Wazarko, you were always pretty much adamantly against using fund balance for tax relief. However, that has occurred in the past two years, and it's going to continue to occur because there's no way to wean yourself off that unless there is a concerted effort to decrease spending, and there is no decrease in the spending, none whatsoever. So, what I would like to say to you is to think very carefully. I suspect tonight you're going to pass this budget on as it stands to the voters for the end of April, where everybody will vote on it. But I will be vocal about opposing this budget, and just please keep in mind, the two-year increase for the Board of Ed was around 11% if you take them together. At the same time, student enrollment in our schools has stagnated, and I get this information from the superintendent of schools. I asked him at your last presentation what the student enrollment has been, and he said it's stagnated. So, we are increasing spending by double digits by a stagnant student population, and now the town side is doing the same thing for whatever reasons they think are appropriate. I think we need to take a very, very hard and long look at what you're doing. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the budget public hearing this evening? All right. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. We can move on to item three, minutes of the previous meeting. What I'm going to do is actually, I know it's going to make it last a little long, but if we could do these one at a time, just for those that weren't at the meetings, we had some, I was one of them, is, in case we have to abstain from any votes because we weren't here. So, who wants to go first?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Gettleman.
Do you want me to just do them all?
No, one at a time.
I know, one at a time. You want me to just continue and do them all?
How, can you do, can you just do 12, March 12th to March 13th and the March 17th?
I'll go up to the 17th? Okay.
Well, do March 11th and 12th first. I'm sorry. I am, really, this worked much better when we were.
I got you.
He's really good.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 11th and 12th, 2025 budget special meetings.
All right. Motion and a second. Any comments, questions, or changes?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I abstain from the March 12th budget special meeting.
All righty. Okay. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next.
Mr. Chair.
If you want to do the next three together, you can.
Okay. Make a motion to accept the minutes of the March 12th, 2025 special meeting, the March 13th, 2025 budget special meeting, and the March 17th, 2025 regular meeting.
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. Any comments, questions, or changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
No, I abstain. You didn't ask for abstention, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I abstain for all three of those days.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
All right. And I think for the last two lines, we can do those all at once.
Okay. Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to accept the March 18th and 19th, 2025 budget special meetings, and the March 19th, 2025 special meeting.
All right. Any comments or questions after you second it? Comments, questions, or changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? No abstentions that time, correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for dealing with me on that. Okay. Item four, announcements and reports. I know it was the end of the month. Anybody with any announcements or reports? Usually, it's a quieter time of the month for us. Okay? No announcements or reports. We do have a couple items under appointments and resignations. Item one, Councilwoman Christopher.
Sure. Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Cheryl Gonzalez from the Inland Wetlands Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Just a quick comment. I know this, I believe, brings inland wetlands down to the bare quorum number four. Anyone out there that's interested in learning a little bit more about water management and what inland wetlands does, we are looking for people to volunteer for that commission. Can contact the town manager's office, or just go online to the plainvillect.com website, and you'll find a place to put an application in, or simply just call if you have some questions and aren't ready to apply. But we seriously need some, we could use probably, what, three or four people? There are some alternate positions available with that commission, so certainly if you're interested, please reach out. We'd love to have you. So, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other appointments or reappointments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Motion to reappoint two incumbents for Planning and Zoning Commission, Elmer Saucier and Glenn Pettit, for the terms 125, 2025 to 12029.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Motion to reappoint to Recycling and Solid Waste Commission, Richard Ireland, for the term 2025 to 2027.
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other appointments this evening?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Tompkins.
Motion to reappoint Stacy Shaw to the Zoning Board of Appeals for term 1024 to 1029.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other appointments this evening? All right. Thank you. Got caught up on a few of those. We can move now to item seven, report of the town attorney. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Just really briefly, first of all, I would second your comments with regard to having people join the Inland Wetlands Commission. It's a very important commission. We have a lot of business coming up, and it would be good to have a full complement of members. And then, I may have some other comments with regard to charter revision, which I'll wait until the manager's report. The only other thing was with regard to the fire department, the subcommittee, I think that the work has gone very well so far, and that the members of the department and the company that have come before the commission have been well-prepared and given us a tremendous amount of information. So, I anticipate we're going to be wrapping up the work and getting a report to charter revision in the not-too-distant future. It's been really, a really good experience so far, I think. So, that's my report. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
I had some handouts.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We can now move on to item eight, report of the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have eight items, and then I'll hand off to Andy for item number nine, which is the happenings that I'm sure you are on the edge of your seat for. He makes it interesting, I know. But let me start with item number one, which is General Electric, the groundwater discharge issue. So, in my notes that I provided for you, this goes back to a decision that was made in 2008, September of 2008. The Town Council held a public hearing to consider a special assessment for GE's groundwater remediation discharge from its Woodford Avenue site. The council voted to adopt a special 50% rate for GE discharge, and at the time, the discharge was expected to last at least a year, but likely would be longer. And the special assessment of 50% was established and voted on by the council at a public meeting. And of course, fast forward to 2025, that has just been in place since 2008. And now, it, Joe Alaso, who is here this evening through his due diligence and looking at this, at why are we continuing to carry this, we're suggesting that the council make a vote to rescind the discount rate of 50% and go back to 100%. We have met and discussed this with GE. It's not a surprise to them. They agree with it and understand that, and that we would move to restore or go back to the original policy of having 100% there. And I'll let Joe, if you have a moment, to come to the lectern there and to the podium. I know there's probably some more information we should give on this, and I don't want to misspeak with respect to things like VOCs that Joe can speak to better than I can, but some of the, some of the elements that they have to deal with that are under the regulatory arm of DEEP. And so, originally in 2008, they were allowed to take care of that by discharging to our sewer. In our talks, we have indicated to GE that we are going to the council to get back to 100%, that will allow them to continue for up to a year, but the clock is ticking in terms of they need to find a permanent solution to that. And I'll let Joe handle the rest on that.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, yeah, this has been going on for 16 years now, and it was supposed to be one year to several years, which I equated at one to five. And after 16 years, when I looked for some, some information from them, I don't see, I don't see an end in sight. It appears to me that they would continue to do this for another 16 years. So, I've talked to DEEP, and I've talked to GE, and my goal is to cease taking that flow. They're not treating the flow. It's supposed to be a remediation for VOC contamination. What they do is actually pump it into our system, and then we take it through our treatment plant. It gets removed with solids. But they should be addressing this because the way they're going, it will never dissipate. It'll be there 42 years from now. They'll still be pumping it unless they pump and remove. So, they need to do some type of treatment on site. They've done it before. They won't be happy about it, but I think that's the position that I've taken on behalf of the town, is that it needs to be 100% because there's nothing special. You know, the thought was that it was groundwater, so it was cheap to treat. It really doesn't work that way. If you have a gallon of sewage and you mix it with a gallon of fresh water, you have two gallons of sewage, and you have to treat the two gallons. That's just how it works. So, they've agreed to this, and they only have one year now. Their permit expired in March, and they would have gotten 60 days extension, and then it would have automatically renewed. But the town decided to comment on the permit renewal, which then extends it for one year for us to work out what it is we want to do. So, I really think this is the way to go. And, you know, we're doing studies, and we're growing as a town, and we want all the capacity that we can get for the, for the businesses and the residents of the town. I think at the time, back in 2000, maybe GE, that was a worthwhile thing to do. Maybe they were a huge employer in town back in those days, but at this point, they're not. So, I don't think that we should extend any type of special circumstance to them.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Just a question to make sure I understand. We say 50%, we say 100%. Is that percent of sewer user fee?
Yes. It's 50% of the fee that we would charge anybody else in town.
Yeah.
And they utilize about 400,000 gallons per month they send us.
Exactly. So, it's, yeah, it's their sewer fee, and you had set up a special account at some point, and it was assessed at just the 50%?
Correct.
And now, they'll be paying 100% of what you would refer to as their sewer fee for this?
Correct. But the same amount of gallons that they've been giving us, whatever gallons they give us now, they'll pay 100% instead of 50.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Did you just say it's 400,000 gallons a month?
Yeah, they can average anywhere between 300,000, 400,000. It a lot depends on how high the groundwater is and how much rain we're getting, because it is a groundwater abatement. But I can tell you, just real briefly, looks like in January this year, they pumped 439,000, and in December, it was 347,000. So, it's a fair amount of water. Last month, it was 271,000, in March, 287,000, in February.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just, I was, didn't realize it was that much. Yeah.
Yeah, it adds up.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. So, there is an item under new business to take action, to have the council rescind the special assessment for GE and set the charge at 100%, the standard rate that's effective the current policy. So, that is, that is the GE item. Item number two, it really was a combination of the grand list, the motor vehicle and the billing that Sarah Carey had talked about, and we covered the, the impact of the motor vehicle changes in the budget process. That was, as you know, a very significant revenue source, revenue swing back to the tune of, I think it was about $600,000. So, that pretty much is done. The grand list is done, signed, and submitted. So, that is all wrapped up at this point.
All right.
Item number three, the Water Pollution Control Standard Disinfection System Upgrade. They plan to upgrade the system. The project involves replacing the Existence Control Center with a new microprocessor-based touch-smart controller system. The scope of work includes removing the current system, installing, mounting, and wiring the new system, and providing training. Since Trojan UV is the sole manufacturer of equipment compatible with our existing system, we recommend proceeding with this as a sole source, sole source purchase. And this, there is an item under new business for that, to waive the bid process and award bid 2025-19 WPC Standard Disinfection System Upgrade to Trojan UV of London, Ontario, Canada, as a sole source in the amount of $25,766. And in case you were wondering, it is sourced out of Canada. I talked with Joe about that. He received communication from Trojan that the price is fixed. It will not be impacted by the tariff implementation so that our price will be held and will not be impacted, and this will be coming out of the capital account for equipment repairs that is budgeted in Joe's account. So, it's $25,766, and that's an item under, under new business. The next item, 2025 Proposed Street Paving List. I provided via John Bossy, a list along with a map of the proposed streets that will be paving, and the information is in your packet. Happy to answer any questions. But, you know, John does the best that he can with, with assessing and evaluating streets, and this is not just a computer program that we have that helps and aid, but also, you know, physical inspection. Obviously, we're out, or John is, quite a bit on a weekly basis to oversee these projects and to know the condition of our streets and kind of triage, if you will, for better word, you know, lack of better word, to understand where the lifespan of these roads are. And so, he puts that into the program as well to match that up with what he's seeing in the field, and coming out with a list that we developed going to long-term planning for those, those streets, trying to address the worst streets first and trying to get as much life out of other streets that we can, because the longer you can, you know, prolong and extend the street, the better off you are, because when you get into, past a mill and overlay, and you've got to do reconstruction of the substrate and the base, and you're going to get very costly per, per mile on that. So, I think. So I think we've done a pretty good job. I, you know, my hat's off to John and his diligence and his, you know, tenacity in terms of keeping up on the roads and, you know, allowing us to go through a sequential road program, I think does the community, you know, justice. So I don't know if there are any questions on any particular roads, but hoping, I know that the map was very tiny and hard, tough to read, but certainly, you're trying to get everything in there. But if you have any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer those.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Brings us to item number five, the Middle School Project Update. The team has been assembled. KBA as the architect and Downs Construction as the construction manager at risk. We're nearing the end of the schematic phase with conceptual plans being submitted to estimators later this month. The project is on time. Expect to begin construction in late spring, early summer of 2026, with an estimated project completion date in the fall of 2028. We are next looking to bring on a commissioning agent, and the scope of work is being drafted and will be included in our P package. And the commissioning agent is one that you bring in on a project to look at all of the different systems, that they are sized appropriately, that they are functioning efficiently, and to go through a sort of a shakeout. You basically turn them up, get them ongoing, and making sure that they're functioning to capacity and efficiently. Andy has obviously been working on this with me as well, and I'm not sure if you had anything to add with the commissioning agent, but that's something he's working on, and we'll get that out shortly. So pleased with the progress thus far. The relationship with KBA and Downs, I think it's a great, the synergy there is good. I think it's a great team mix, so I would expect that things would run rather smoothly. That's my expectation anyway. Any questions on the middle school project update?
All right.
Item six is the Charter Revision Commission Update. As the town attorney alluded to, they had a meeting I was not able to attend, nor I think was Andy able to attend, so I'll certainly defer to the attorney for that report.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. So we did, we've had a number of meetings. Most of them have been attended by the manager and the assistant manager. The work of the committee has progressed relatively smoothly. As you know, they were tasked with the fire department responding to the fire department report, as well as taking a look at the town manager residency requirement, as well as any other issues that might present themselves. As far as the fire department is concerned, they're waiting on the report from the subcommittee, even though at this point, it does not appear that we will recommend any action, the subcommittee as far as the charter is concerned, but that's not definite, and I would just wait till the end. But so far, from what we've seen, I don't know that the, I think charter revision can wait until we're done. I don't think they'll have a lot of work to do to be able to get their work done. As far as the other items that they might want to look at, they have considered some other items, and there are a couple of items that they are considering, and the most recent one has to do with the payment of stipends to the Board of Assessment Appeal Members. So they will be visiting some other issues now that they had the, you know, they went through the whole charter, and they decided to take a look at some other provisions. And I don't know where we'll come out on that, but that's something that they're looking at. And then with regard to the town manager residency requirement, there was a vote and a motion with regard to eliminating that. There is no language that has been finalized, and I don't know that there has been a report that's prepared to come to council yet, but that is the way that they're leaning so far. There was quite a bit of information that they received with regard to the tenancy requirement. They, I did a presentation with regard to the legal issues that were raised, in my view, from the language that's used in the charter, in particular, the use of the word residence and tenure. And also, I had described to them the legal issues that were raised, given the contract that we had with the manager before the amendment, and the potential issues that were raised because of that, so they could understand why we had referred this. They also did quite a bit of research. The deputy manager and the clerk gave them a survey of other towns and residency requirements, as well as the various charter provisions that apply to those towns. And so there's been quite a bit of information, and I think they've done a thorough job so far. And I anticipate that there'll be a report relatively short. We have another meeting in a couple of weeks, Madam Clerk, in two weeks. Waiting to see on the fire department, our subcommittee, we're almost, we're almost, we have another meeting, and we're almost done with all of our factual investigation, whatever you want to call it. So, you know, the commission has done, as I said, the issues that were referred to them. They've done a thorough job, and they are looking at other things, which they've asked us. I actually was asked a legal question today with regard to the stipend issue, and so I assume that when they get done, they'll have taken a look at everything and have made suggestions. Does anybody have any questions?
Anyone with any questions? Just once they do submit their formal report and their recommendations, we have a chance to sit down with them and talk to them about their recommendations, correct?
It'll be up to the council to decide what's actually going to be put on for the referendum.
But it is inappropriate when they do present their final recommendations that we can, we have some conversation.
I would imagine that they would agree to do that.
Okay.
I mean, I would imagine that they will do that.
Okay.
I don't want to speak for the commission, but I assume that that would be exactly what they're going to do.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else, any questions or comments regarding charter revision? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then I think I'm back to item number seven, the Shuttle Meadow Pump Station Project Update, which is moving along. It's making progress, and everything thus far has gone smoothly. On Tuesday, the EverSource is scheduled to complete all the work necessary to start powering the station with the new poles and finishing moving all the fiber network to them as well. This is the last step that needs to be taken before COVAX gets on-site and starts with the demolition and replacing of the station. However, COVAX has been busy submitting drawings, ordering equipment, and storing material off-site, which has allowed us to be where we are with some of the long lead times that you see with materials. But the substantial completion date is September 15, 2025, with a final completion by November 14, 2025, so they're, you know, on schedule right now. And Joe is also here, as you know, that could answer any additional questions, or I'd give Joe an opportunity, if there's something I missed in terms of detail that you would like to add, which we can just take questions.
I think he did a wonderful job.
Yeah, it's not, it's not often we get to say things are running smoothly, right?
Yeah, no, no.
Take advantage of that, which is, which is good, and, because it's an important project, and we're glad to see that it's on track.
Okay.
You know, I mean, there's, obviously, there's, you know, some things, I don't know, in terms of the traffic pattern, but, you know, the issue shouldn't really be that impactful to traffic or anything like that, in terms of people coming by and see, you know, I mean, I'm sure we're going to field questions, because it's one of those things that you just, unless you're seeing this and viewing this, you're like, you know, what's going on over there, you know?
Yeah, most likely, nobody will really be impacted. We'll be keeping the sidewalk open on the other side. Anybody walking on that particular side of Shuttle Meadow will not be allowed to, because that'll be your work, so, but I don't see any, really any interruptions.
Yeah, and obviously, it's going through the summer months, so we're, you know, concerned that, you know, obviously, that the sidewalk will maintain to be open.
Okay.
Yeah. Should be good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Any questions or comments regarding that item? All right. Number eight.
Eight is the EverSource Gas Restoration Plan. I wanted to give the council an update, and also for anyone watching the meetings as well. Just a heads up on their schedule. John Bossy and I met with the team from EverSource on March 26 to discuss their restoration plans for the summer of '25 and '26, and hopefully, knock on wood, '26 will be the end, and they'll be out of Plainville, with exception to, obviously, any type of emergency repairs or things that they don't, are unforeseen. But with respect to their restoration plans, they have already, they've begun this week, and I submitted a map for you, color-coded for the different years, but pink for 2025 will be starting in the Trumbull Ave area with Williams and Grove and Madison Cottage, that area. And they'll begin work to replace the mains and do the lateral services. They're retiring pipe that's, that they have deemed beyond the normal service life, so basically, replacing all of the old steel that's been in there and moving to a plastic PVC type of piping. And hopefully, you know, again, that they're doing what they need to do on their end with notification. This is just an added level of covering it here for added coverage, but, you know, we'll certainly get some calls, and we'll try to do our best to, you know, work around the issues and disruptions that may happen within the neighborhoods that they're working in. And hopefully, those services and cutoff and restoration is going to be, you know, limited to hours and not longer than that. But again, it's not, it's not the work we're doing. It's EverSource gas and their restoration. So this is part of their long-term plan to get, you know, much of the infrastructure upgraded as possible. And like I said, it'll move from this point here through other parts of town through '25 and '26. So if the council thinks it's appropriate, we can certainly do more posts and/or social media and/or website posts, just to help the public follow the progress with EverSource. And I know it's, it's a pain for those areas that are, that are impacted throughout the summer, throughout the fall, with the amount of noise and dust and disruption that happens. So again, I think the light at the end of the tunnel for 2026, we should be fully upgraded, and they should be out of our hair at that point.
And I, I just, do you want to ask it first?
Yeah, my phone blew up when, when word got out about this. I used to live in that neighborhood. How are they going to leave it when they're done? It's been seven years since it's been paved. Are they going to repave the whole area?
Well, they'll, they'll be required to restore the area that it disturbed, so I don't think, if you're talking Trumbull where they start and those cross streets?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, they'll, if the, wherever the trench is, they've got to, they've got to restore that.
Not like Broad Street.
Not, well, Broad Street is, well, we, I can't answer, I don't know, we ran into some problems on Broad Street. They are, as I said before at the previous meeting, coming in to restore Broad Street before Memorial Day. So I can't say as to what that will look like, but hopefully, well, it has to be to our, it has to be to our standard. But it is not going to be the entire width of the road. It is a portion that they're restoring, probably likely half the road from the center line over, and restoring that. And that, I think they have to follow the same restoration protocol for Trumbull and any other, other street that they're going. But from out here, that was, that was throughout the season. They didn't finish within the season.
Right.
So we'll be monitoring this season '25, make sure they get as much done as they can.
So what's the process? At the end, when they're done with, with all the gas mains and they patch the holes, we send someone out to say, yes, that's okay?
Yeah, John, John Bossy and his crew will, will be doing that in terms of, you're right.
Okay. Yeah, because I know there's the five-year moratorium. Did they purposely wait till now so they don't have to do the whole street?
No, can't speak to that.
Right.
But again, I just, and again, too, you jogged my memory in terms of the Whiting Street, and, you know, I attended a meeting with, with John to meet with the contractors in, in the fall, and, you know, that they weren't going to be able to finish, and that, you know, there was just a few things that, that were pointed out that weren't up to grade, so to speak, or weren't, weren't up to restoration levels, you know? So a number of items pointed out, and so I know he's, he's, he knows what he's doing, and he's got a great eye for things that, for the layperson wouldn't, wouldn't pick up, you know, with that, the, you know, the trenches in the, in the, what they call the, I forget, the wheel alignment. And, and so they just pick up so many, and it's, it's interesting, from my perspective, because I'm not an engineer, the things you see when, when you're walking, that obviously you're not going to see in a, in a car. And, you know, what, in that, you know, just walking, you pick up a lot of information. So I'm confident we will, we will hold their feet to the fire and get a good product.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Yeah, this is going to be, that was nice of them to wait seven years to decide to go replace some stuff, but.
Yeah, the maddening part is, after all of this is done, and they complete all of the upgrades, and we've talking about our own paving plan, is just, it's not just, you know, EverSource gas, but Aquarian, and also state DOT, that, you know, inevitably, there'll be a gas emergency or gas break, and you got, we can't really deny them, you know, a permit to get in there and, you know, cut the road, even though we may just have paved it only, you know, two years ago.
Yep.
Or, you know, worse, less than a year, you know? So we do run a, and they're aware of this, a five-year moratorium on that. And the only exception is, or, are the emergencies.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you just reminded me of something. Last year, we approved the money to raise the manhole covers on 177. There's some that are done and some are not. They're not done yet, are they?
No. Joe, Joe's already up in.
I hit the same two every day.
I knew I stayed for a reason. So yeah, we have uncovered four of them, and that was to install flow meters for the 10-week period that we're doing the facilities plan.
Okay.
The, the additional ones will be raised, this was the beginning of March, middle of March, they'll be done by the beginning of April, or rather, beginning of May. I'm sorry, I got my months off. So they should be done this month. All the, all the materials here, I've applied for the state permit, they've approved it, so now it's just a matter of bringing the company in and doing it. It'll be quick.
I've been meaning to ask for weeks, because I hit the one at the end of Johnson Ave and the one in front of the condos across from Maxine every day.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We'll get it. It'll be nice and smooth. It'll be like that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions regarding item eight? Any other questions with anything related to the town manager's report, or something that you want to bring up that wasn't brought up already? All right. Then the assistant town manager, he's on.
It's no time. It's item nine.
Happenings, yeah, I know. I was getting jealous. Joe got all this speaking time. All right, a couple items to share with you for happenings. Good evening, everyone. Spring bulk pickup started today, April 7, and it'll be ending on Monday, June 30. Plainville has an on-demand policy for the collection of bulk pickup. Residents who currently have curbside waste and recycling collection are eligible to receive one bulk pickup per calendar year, free of charge, for acceptable large items that do not fit in the normal waste collection. You can visit the town of Plainville's website at www.plainvillect.com for a complete list of acceptable bulk items and instructions on how to request a pickup, which is similar to previous years, calling CWPM. There's a voicemail that'll come up, and you could leave a message with them, and they will add you to the collection list. Requests have to be in by Friday at 3:00 PM to be considered for the following Monday. The transfer station on Granger Lane opened for the season on Saturday, April 5. The hours of operation are on Saturdays only. hours of operation are on Saturdays only, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The transfer station is for Town of Plainville residents, and an ID is required. No commercial vehicles or businesses are permitted to discard material. There is a fee for the disposal of certain items, and you can refer to the town's website under Transfer Station Ordinance for a list of fees and a list of acceptable items. For any questions, you can call Public Works Administration at 860-793-0221, extension 7176. The Plainville Recreation Department announced their summer programs, and registration started today at 9:00 a.m. for Plainville residents. You can visit plainvillect wreckdesk.com for more information, and you can also find updates on the Town of Plainville and the Recreation Department's Facebook and Instagram pages. And finally, from the Senior Center, I have two items to share. And for all information on Senior Center programs, you can call the Senior Center at 860-747-5728. And all programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. Caregiving Connections is on Tuesday, April 8th, tomorrow, at 10:00 a.m. This is an opportunity to connect with other caregivers at the Senior Center and to support one another on the journey to recognize the challenges and frustrations of 24/7 caregiving. And the final item is the Memory Cafe, which is on Thursday, April 17th, at 2:00 p.m. And this is a welcoming space for those experiencing memory loss and their loved ones. And that's all I have to share today.
All right. Thank you. Before we move on, any questions or comments? All right. Thank you. Thank you for your reports. At this point in the meeting, we'll open up the meeting to public comments. If you wish to address the council, you may do so. Please step forward to the podium, give your name and address. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. The first ring means you have 30 seconds left. The second ring means the three minutes has run out. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council this evening? Mr. Kislik?
John Kislik, 65 Forestwood Avenue. How about if you give me an extra minute tonight because of this big crowd? Marilyn and I are such dedicated citizens that we came straight here from holiday, didn't even stop home, but I had my political hat in the car. I cannot believe that you had two public hearings and the town council meeting all in the same night. We used to have to have a special night just for the budget. This is just unbelievable. And the other thing, since the boot barn opened, I figured every one of you would have cowboy hats on tonight. Saw the picture in the paper. So, anyway, I got a couple things. The thing with General Electric, maybe you remember, Chris?
I do. In fact, I said, I bet you John talks about it tonight.
Yeah. I, Freedom of Information, all them gallons, and I, I was opposed to it only because General Electric is a multi-billion dollar corporation, and they would have had to build their own filtration plant if we didn't allow them to do this. I called three other superintendents of wastewater treatment plants, and they said they would never do that. And one of them, I don't know if it's true, Joe would know, they said, because of this water, mostly it's clear except for the chemicals, it is harder to treat, which everybody would think it'd be different, but he told me it's tougher to treat clear, pure water. The other thing on the budgets, the Board of Education, you know, they seem bare bones. It's bare bones of something, in my opinion, that's already inflated and bloated. I mean, they are so top-heavy in administration and whatever. They, they have, they have people in there that if they ask for $2 million, you got some of them going to say, are you sure that's enough? And a lot of your town council members, I feel like you're lobbyists for the Board of Ed, and we don't have the lobbyists for the taxpayer. You know, it, it's not right. Education, you have one person on, on the committee, on Board of Ed, who was honest, and I really appreciate what she said. She couldn't see giving them these kind of raises when the students' test scores are getting lower. They're failing. Why do you, however you want to say it, appreciate people or give them raises who are doing a bad job? They should be fired. Get somebody in there who can teach these kids. Change the curriculum, you know. I'm not, I'm not no brilliant educator, but a lot of it is common sense. The, the kids are just hurting now, and as people are laughing all the way to the bank with all this money, you keep throwing more and more money. The town side, I will not vote for that budget, because as long as this town council is going to continue to waste $52,000 a year on that balloon festival, I don't see why you should raise our taxes one cent. I think that should be stopped. This town should not be subsidizing that balloon festival. It is a big disruption for the town, for one thing. And, you know, I never hear anything about an audit from where all that money that they get goes to, how much they get. When we're, as taxpayers, I, I do not like paying taxes for them to do that. So that's about what I have tonight. I would have had more if I didn't miss the public hearing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Hi. If I may, I'd like to give you all a copy.
Yeah, if you want to just hand it to the town attorney, we can...
I don't know if I have enough for everybody, but...
Well, we could share. We'll make it work.
Okay.
I'm Teresa Harper, 245 Farmington Ave in Plainville. I'm here tonight to find out about two issues. The first is the sidewalks on Farmington Avenue, specifically the west side of Farmington Avenue between Cleveland Memorial Drive and North Hampton Lane. When the sidewalks, sidewalk survey was done for the town sometime before 2021, which I just gave you all a copy, this section of Farmington Avenue was seventh on the list of sidewalks in very poor or serious condition. Since then, it appears that sidewalks in better condition have been worked on. This section of the sidewalk is used by children walking to Wheeler School. There have been times that children have tripped and fallen on this sidewalk. Apple Rehab, Rehab is also located along this section of sidewalk. On occasion, friends or families will take a loved one for a walk, either in a wheelchair or a walker, or just shuffling down. I have not seen any of them injured, but I feel that it could happen if the conditions of the sidewalk is not addressed. Part of this section is also part of the bike path. Yes, we do have a bike path in town. It is supposed to be maintained by the town, and the bike path basically crosses Farmington Avenue in front of Apple Rehab. So part of that distance encompasses the bike path. This is not only used by bikers, but also runners and walkers. I would like to request that the town council look into doing the repairs that are desperately needed on this section of sidewalk. One last thing. Why does part of Farmington Ave have concrete sidewalks and part, and the part from the Y down have asphalt? My second question is, has to do with paving Farmington Avenue. I know that it is the responsibility of Connecticut DOT, but is there any way to find out if work will be done on Farmington Avenue anytime this year? I also would like to mimic what Kathy Puglisi and, I forget his name, said.
John Kislik.
But I too agree that right now, the Board of Education budget is out of control. Just because they're never supposed to go lower than the year before doesn't mean you have to go many percent over every year. Give the taxpayers of this town a break and lower that. Thank you for your time. I look forward to hearing about you, about the sidewalks and the paving. Have a great night.
You too. And we, we got both her questions.
Yeah.
Is it something we can answer now, or do we need to do a little research?
Well...
Because I can't answer them right now. I'd have to look into that.
Yeah, there, we can say that, that DOT is looking at Route 10 in terms of, of pavements, and, and so we're going to take a look at what, what other sections they're, they're taking a look at. We'll take a look at reviewing this as well. Certainly, if, if I could give you a card, do you have a card on you? And we'll give you a card, we'll reach out, or, you know, have you reach out, give us your information, and, and we'll give an update for you in terms of where the...
On the sidewalks?
On the sidewalks and the paving, yeah. Absolutely, and the bike path. Thank you. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council this evening? Yes, Marilyn Sharet.
I'm not at all. Marilyn Sharet, 18 Milford Street in Plainville. Well, I haven't been here for a few months. I'm sure you miss me. Except the fact that I'm not very happy with this council. And if you recall correctly, I mentioned the same thing a few months back. Right, Chris?
Probably.
You don't remember? I evidently not.
Well, I, I have a feeling of what you're going to bring up, but...
That's okay.
It's your time. I don't want to...
Anyway, I mentioned at, a few months back, I mentioned that I wasn't happy with the council. First of all, is because of the residency of the town manager. According to what was written up by the town attorney, and you approved it, we should be getting monthly reports as to the progress of his search. Although I haven't been here, I watched the meeting on Nutmeg TV, and not one of you asked the manager for a progress report. And even not one of you has asked if he has looked into it. Hold on, my notes are all messed up. Sorry. You asked me why I'm disappointed in you. So now I have several questions and comments for the town manager, if you don't mind. Mr. Paulhouse, in January, did you look for any houses? Or did you have any comments or, or connection with your representative here in Plainville for the town, for property?
I don't know if the council wants me to go through this process. I prefer to answer to the council.
Yeah, I, if you have specific questions for him, I'll be happy to take them and get you your answers.
Well, I have to ask through you to get to him?
Typically, this is your opportunity to address the council.
Well, I, I wanted to, I asked if I could address the town manager, I mean, the, yeah, the town manager.
I'm going to...
All right. All right. Would you please ask him if he has seen anything?
Tonight, I will not. I'm not going to do that right now. No.
Well, I want to know if he's seen anything at all in February.
You're welcome to, you can reach out. I'll, I'll be happy to get you answers to your questions. I'm not refusing to answer your questions, but...
I believe that we were told by the town attorney that there was going to be a monthly report given by you to the people.
No, I think you're incorrect in that statement.
I don't think I am. But...
I don't think...
That being said, the last, I'm, like I said, I'm very disappointed in...
And you, and I understand you're disappointed, and I'll give you a little bit more time.
I do want to let you know. And, and the last month that I want to know about is the full month of March. I want to know if he has looked at any houses in town. And I'd also like to comment that there have been a number of houses that have been available in the last three months. One of the houses, if I can find my notes, let's see if I can see, I believe it was on Bernice Court. My point being, and obviously, you're not going to let the town manager answer any questions, but it's something that...
Now, again, that, that's not what I said. I'm, I'm willing to take your questions and get answers for you. I'm just not going to do it under the public comment section of, of the council meeting.
My, my personal comment to you is the residents of the Plainville, of Plainville deserve to hear the answers. And you're, you're saying that you're going to do it off camera. Am I correct?
I didn't say anything about doing anything off camera. I mean...
Okay. Okay.
I mean, I, I'm just, I know you're trying to put me in a corner, and that's fine, and that's partly what you like to do, but...
I was personally just disappointed that the town manager didn't want to answer me directly.
And you are, you were fine to feel disappointed.
Yeah. Okay.
But I do think you've also made a couple assumptions that aren't true. And, and I think it's important that we're all on the same page.
Well, I'll look back on some of the meetings.
Okay.
Okay. In the meantime, the last question that I do have for you to direct to the town manager, if you will, is I would like to know if in his first two years here, if he ever looked at any houses at all. Now, I'll move on to another events, another thing that I have in my mind.
And if, I'll just give you another 30 seconds or so.
Okay, I'll read fast. We have spent a fortune with surveyors for various options for the trail. The residents have recommended Farmington Avenue, which is a very historic route in Plainville, which would not disrupt any neighborhoods. Please, this is our town. Start looking, listening to the people. This is our town and our taxpayers, taxpayers, tax dollars. Maybe we need an audit from Washington with Musk. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council this evening? Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It's, I just, to respond, I, I just reluctant to answer just because I don't want to miss me, I don't, I'm not prepared with my file in front of me tonight. So I just thought it'd be better if I speak at a future meeting and not misspeak at, at this meeting. That's my reluctance to speak tonight.
And that, thank you for saying something. I don't know if that's okay with you. I mean, I, I just want you to understand we're not ignoring you, and, and you're not getting the answer you want, and I understand your frustration. I, I'm not questioning that. I'm just saying, you know, he's not prepared to answer your questions tonight. So instead of us trying to fabricate something, I think it's important that we, that we get you the information you want. And you may not agree with it once we get it to you, and, and that's, you know, unfortunately, that's sometimes what happens. But I just want you to feel like we're not ignoring you. I, I, you know, that is not the intent.
I just wanted to know the progress.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Anyone else wish to address the council? All right, we'll close public comment. We can move on to old business, which we are taking no action on that tonight. Item 11, new business. We do have a few motions tonight.
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to adopt the proposed amendment to ordinance, Chapter 355, taxation, Article 12.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number two.
Oh, these numbers.
Yeah, someone's going to have to fill it. Yes, councilwoman, we're empty.
A motion to approve, A, the general government fiscal year 2026 budget, including debt service and capital projects of $28,511,798. Okay. B, the Board of, Board of Education fiscal year 2026 budget of $47,779,178, for a total expenditure budget of $76,290,976.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and just voting on the budget will be at the Firehouse on Tuesday, April 29th, from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And there are, there are no absentee ballots related, because technically, this is an adjourned town meeting vote. All right?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A motion for the town council acting as a water pollution control authority to reverse the special sewer user account for General Electric and...
the special sewer user account for General Electric and set the charges at 100% of the standard rate in effect.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any follow-up questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number four.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Gettleman.
Motion to waive the bid process and award bid number 2025-19, WPC standard disinfection system upgrade to Trojan UV Ontario, Canada, in an amount not to exceed $25,766.
Second.
All right, motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number five.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Tompkins.
Motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other discussions of interest tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have.
Yes.
A couple of items here, if I may. One, just a plug and a reminder for the April 15th celebration of the 50th anniversary of the Senior Center. Everyone should have received their invitations. That'll be at the AquaTurf in Suddington. I think it'll be a grand evening and a lot of fun. I just wanted to put that plug out there. Also, I wanted to, to bring, just mention, you should have all gotten an email from me earlier today on the fact that the police department cracked a case that involved a, I guess, for lack of a better term, burglary team that was proliferating around in a 10-town area. So we were to crack that case with three arrests. So that was, I thought, noteworthy and a great job in terms of collaboration, investigative work to get that to an arrest. So I think they're doing some great work, and I just wanted to highlight that.
All right.
Also, just, you may have seen or heard or seen a group out front, the sign, they're working on the digital sign that's coming in for the front of the building. That is underway, so that'd be a couple more days for that. And finally, Andy has show and tell.
Did Joe also leave?
Yes, he did.
Oh, he would have loved it. Joe, Joe brought this to the office and had tried to get me to guess what this was, but he wanted to share it. This is one of the filters that we purchased from Vernon. So there's 401 of these filters, so.
Nice.
Guess it's show and tell. Thought it was like a giant fan.
Sounds like a giant police department patch.
Yeah, it is. Yeah. It was a big giant.
Joe always likes show and tell. He just missed it, but he would have liked to have.
That is your 10-micron filter right there.
Yeah, 10-micron filter.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Unless anyone has any other questions or comments, we have no executive session this evening. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned, and our next regular meeting will be Monday, April 21st.